Right, we are live, folks, good to see you again. Welcome to our Ruth Bible study during the season of Lent. We're going to be in chapter one tonight, so if you had a chance to read that, great. If not, we're going to read it together and kind of go through it chunk by chunk. So we're glad that you're with us, all of you that are here live, and those of you that may be watching this later. I'll open us with a word of prayer. Well, God, help us to see in this time how your word speaks to us even now as we explore the contours of this ancient story. Bring it to life for us, for the power of your Holy Spirit. Help us to ask good questions and to think deep thoughts and to be confident that each of us has something to say and to give in this time. I pray that you would be present to us in surprising ways. Amen. So I'm going to go ahead and share again. Hi. The slides are helpful for me. If you're a visual person, I just think that's just really helpful. So, um, yeah. We're going to be in chapter one. Is everybody cool? Actually, you know, I'll just hit, I'll do that. Does that, does that make it bigger for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So we're in chapter one, and I'm just kind of calling it crossing borders because a lot of that happens here in this first chapter. And some of you here hopefully are the, are our cameras in the way because it is on my screen. Can you see the whole image?
Yes.
Okay, okay, good. All right. So, so, yeah, this is just a great little sketch of Naomi you see in the middle there in the gold yellow. And then, of course, Ruth clinging to her and Orpah leaving the scene there. Interesting. So just to kind of set things up, there's, there's three big questions that I want us to think about tonight. And that is, what does it mean to be born in a world and a place not of your choosing or of your making? And what difference does the word of God make to that world? That world that you neither, that you didn't choose or make. And so we're thinking in terms of Ruth being drawn into the world of the Israelites as well as Elemalach and Naomi and their sons being drawn into the world of Moab. And to think too, liturgies are just anything that we do together in a normal rhythm. And so we're all formed by liturgies and whether or not they're liturgies that are in the church or liturgies that are a part of just something outside of the church. That's why I say sacred or otherwise, you know, is our liturgy, whatever things we are doing together. Are they forming us to be living examples, not perfect, but living examples of the love and welcome of God? Or are we being formed in a way to be something that runs counter to that love? And a love that includes enemies, which is perhaps the radical and most difficult thing about being a Christian. And then the third big question I want to maybe look at tonight is, what is the new story that the book of Ruth wishes to tell situated as it is in the midst of an old story? And so what is God bringing up newness? You know, there's always a sense that God is doing something new and renewing and revitalizing. And so what is the new story that the book of Ruth is inviting us into in the midst of an old story? That isn't necessarily invalidated, but that is made clearer. God has made clear in the midst of it. So those are the three big questions we're going to be looking at, maybe hopefully not necessarily answering, but maybe giving a deeper sense of how to think about them. Maybe we get to some answers on it. So this is, this is a great image. I just, I forget, I always look at, look for artwork. And I just love this image. You see Naomi in the middle, weathered in her age and forlorn. You know, that's just kind of the sense of really melancholic, right? You see Orpah kissing her on the cheek and Ruth clinging to her and looking, looking up into the light and to, you know, something of future yet to be lived in front of her. So you see the affection there of these two women for their mother. So just, just before we start reading the scripture, just some preliminary thoughts. And, and I think we talked about some of this last week, but normally when we think about Ruth, we go, we jump right into, I think it's verses 16 and 17, where Ruth, you know, articulates her devotion down to where you go, I go where you stay, I'll stay. You know, your people will be my people, your God, my God. And that's wonderful. That's something that I think is, I mean, it is popular and quoted and beloved for a reason. Yet it is embedded within a larger framework here, right? And so sometimes when we lift those things out of the larger context, they become kind of like these, these sentimental things that we say. And really, we want to make sure that, that we're lodging this, housing this, this saying within what else is going on here? So to ask the question, what's this strange world that we're being invited into? Surely it's not a kitsch world, a sentimental world. There's a lot more layers to it than that, just like our lives. They're complex. We're human beings. It's hard being a human being. And so there's those layers that are present in the story, and we should expect that. And like we said last week at the close, this is a story that's marked by grief. It begins in grief, loss, dislocation, and it centers women, and that's important. The guys who aren't here in this study tonight are missing out on something that's really important to learn. And among its primary concerns, again, we saw this last week, is what do we do about Gentiles? Or in Hebrew, Goyim, non-Jews, people like us, you and me? What, what do we do about? And that's, that's Israel asking that question to itself. What do we do about Gentiles? And so the hope is that through this story, Israel and we are invited to reflect, self-reflect on our presumptions about the world and about people who are different than us. There's a lot of that going on in this passage. Okay, so I'm not going to do any reading. I'm going to ask somebody if they, if they want to read this. You can read your version that you have in front of you, or you can read the one that I have on the screen, which is just the newer version.
I'll read.
Great, thanks, Becky.
During the days when the judges ruled, there was a famine in the land. A man with his wife and two sons went from Bethlehem of Judah to dwell in the territory of Moab. The name of that man was Elemalach?
Yeah.
Elemalach?
Elemalach, yeah. Elemalach.
Elemalach. The name of his wife was Naomi, and the name of his two sons were Malin and Chilian. They were Ephraïtes from Bethlehem and Judah. They entered the territory of Moab and settled there. But Amel, Amel Malak, Naomi's husband, died. Then only she was left alone with her, along with her two sons. They took wives for themselves, Moabite women. The name of the first was Orpah, and the name of the second was Ruth. And they lived there for about 10 years. But both of the sons, Malin and Chilian, also died. Only the woman was left without her two children and without her husband. Then she arose along with her daughters-in-law to return from the field of Moab because while in the territory of Moab, she had heard that the Lord had paid attention to his people by providing food for them.
What are some things that you notice and hear in this, this opening scene setting passage?
I realized that Naomi was left without any blood relatives. That her immediate family, her husband and her two children were gone. And the only people left for her were her family by marriage.
That is just an extraordinary amount of loss.
It is. And I guess what I love about this story so much, and I loved that picture you showed right before this, was the love and how that became her blood, that became her family, those two daughter-in-laws of hers. And what a great example for all of us.
Yeah. Yeah, the kind of radical love that causes tears. I'm sorry.
Proceeding what Lynn said, by naming everybody, I think it, it shows how imported, important the lineage was back then. So, you know, it, it's not just that his, you know, her husband died. It was, we know their names and so it shows the importance and why she felt this grief.
Yes, yes. Yes.
And also the importance of where they were, where they were from, where they were at the time of the death.
Yeah, there's a lot of timestamps in these opening verses that really are indicate to us that it's relatively short period of time. This is kind of in a, you know, it's just, this is a moment where it feels like life is one thing after another. Anything else jump out to you?
Well, verse six. In verse six, the Lord came to their aid and provided food.
Yeah, there's an end to the famine, right? The, the, the reason for their migration doesn't, doesn't last forever. Seems that the Lord had paid attention to his people and provided food for them. And his people was Israel, not the Moabites, but they were in Moab. So. What was, somebody else is going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say, I didn't realize that Elemalach had already been dead for 10 years by the time the sons had died. I think in the past, we just kind of thought they all died all at once altogether. And I don't know, to me, it just kind of makes me think of like, you know, a lot of people can't imagine their children dying before them. And so it's, if her husband had already died and he'd been dead for 10 years, like, of course, she probably thought that she was next and not her sons and so. It adds to like the suddenness and the expanse of the grief there.
Yeah, that's, that's a particular kind of grief. I don't think any of us, like, I mean, we all, we all expect to outlive our children in, in a lot of ways. It's, it's not always the case. There are many ways in which your children precede their parents' death, and that is a very specific kind of grief. I mean, it's almost like you wonder why, you know, the young die and the older left to linger. I mean, I can imagine that being like a thought that Naomi might have had, the death of her sons. Let's, let's dig, let's dig in here because all the things y'all are naming are just fantastic and wonderful. Like I said, contours to this certain story. The opening line is, is everything. And it, and the literal translation of it is, and it was in the days that the judges judged. If you've ever read the book of Judges, I mean, it is just an absolute nightmare of a time. It was, I mean, it was just not a good time to be alive. It just feels like when you read that book, like, it's like watching like Game of Thrones or something like, nobody's safe. Nobody's safe. I mean, and, and it's just full of these, these folks that are just bad folks. I mean, just full of just this, this rich complexities of character that are just, and so flawed. But one of the ways we can think about judges is like chieftains. They're not kings. They're, they're more like warlords that are raised up to defend Israel. And, and it's, there's this repeating pattern in, in Judges. Israelites screw up, a judge is raised up to deliver them. There's all this massive destruction, and they only ever partially recover. They never really learned their lessons. And the last verse of the book of Judges is, in those days, there was no king in Israel. Everyone did what was right in their own eyes. I mean, what a, what an absolutely hopeless, like, you know, into a book, right? I mean, and then we have Ruth, and the Christian Bible is a story that immediately proceeds as a set in this time. It doesn't, it doesn't come after it. It's set in the middle of it. And so we, we think about in the middle of this horribly violent, volatile time, here is the book of Ruth. There's some stuff in the book of Judges real quick that, if you ever read the book of Judges, you'll learn quickly. These people are just crazy. Like, there's this guy named Ehud. He was like me, he was left-handed. He just decided one day that he was just going to, you know, he was just going to kill this king that was harassing Israel. And so he just, and this guy was a rotund king. And, you know, he just goes and he sneaks in, he just, he gets, he goes into the king's court. He, you know, gets a meeting with the king, and he just comes up to the king and just rams his sword right into this guy's, this big guy's gut. And the Hebrew says, the fat closed in around the sword. I mean, just like plunges it into. There was a female judge named Yael who kills, who kills this foreign king's general of his armies by impaling him on a tent spike. I mean, this is full of this crazy stuff, you know, just these very violent stories. There's one named Jephtha where he, he, he kind of has this misplaced oath to God. He says, you know, God, I will, you know, upon my return home, if you grant me victory in this battle, I'll sacrifice the first thing of my household that I see. He returns home after the victory. He sees his only child, his daughter. He sacrifices his daughter to the Lord. I mean, like, you know, things that God did not ask of them. You know, you can see that there's this incredible waywardness in how they are living. And so there's just this, there's a sense of just, there is no centering, grounding, you know, even attention paid to the, the deep covenants and love that God has shared with these people, right? So this is the timestamp. This is where we are in the history of Israel. And so within that, you know, like you guys said, we're drawn into this moment of famine, right? So you can imagine this is like one of, would have been perceived as like a kind of punishment for the people of Israel. There's this famine that struck the land. We've been idolatrous, we've fallen away from God, right? So this is the reason this is happening. And there are a number of famines that strike Israel in their history. A couple of them listed out there in scripture references, you can look at Genesis 1241, and then again, 2 Samuel 21. So it's not the first or the last time that they will endure something like this. But in every one of these instances, people go to cross borders, same way today. Some kind of crisis happened somewhere. People, people move, people move away from that. They're escaping something, trying to find refuge somewhere. And so we don't know what the cause of this famine was. We just know it happens. And again, like we said last week, one of the places that struck is Bethlehem, which means house of bread. So there's a lot of irony in that, right? And so, again, we noticed, yeah, this family, Elemalach, his wife, Naomi, and their two sons, Malan and Hiliyan, they cross a border and they go of all places to Moab. And this is a people that is the enemy, that we'll read a scripture a little bit later tonight, that is, is a place that reminds the Israelites why they don't associate with Moabites, some of their, their rough history. But Moabites were stereotyped in Hebrew folklore as lacking hospitality and being filled with scandalous people, especially scandalous women and promiscuous women. And so, you know, you can read in that, there's kind of this fear of the other, that's the stereotype into the people of Moab. And yet, another irony is that the people of Moab receive Elemalach and his family as they flee famine. So immediately we see that there's already some sense that the way we thought about these people, these people, those people, that may not be the way that, the way that they actually are. Maybe not all of them. There's probably some bad folks there, just like there's bad folks everywhere. But that doesn't mean that we can blanket that at all. So, yeah, right here in what you guys are talking about, there's a sense that the family, as they knew it, breaks down. The family breaks down what, what we assumed would be forever and was a sense of security for Naomi. It's gone. You know, and this is a patriarchal society, and so the sense of not having, you know, a husband left Naomi very vulnerable, but also Ruth and Orpah as well. So there's all these questions going on here. There's a sense of moral failure. Was Elemalach one of those unfaithful people? Who would have been judged as such as being the cause of Israel's famine? We don't know, right? There's questions of national identity. Who's who? Who matters? Who's worthy? There's the reality of famine, displacement, and enemies. And that's where Ruth's story begins. So just some, just some, some background here. And guys, feel free to jump in at any point and just, let's, let's talk. I mean, so you can stop me at any point, please do. Questions, comments, pushback, I don't care. It's all good stuff. Elemalach's name means something like, to me, will come kingship. Another translation of his name is that God is my king. And so we don't really know in what sense his name is being used here. But he, he features so little in this story. He's, he's brought up again as having possessed some land and some small measure of wealth back home in Bethlehem when they return. But by and large, him, him as a person, as a character, clearly that was not his destiny to become a kind of kingly person. And his insignificant role may suggest to us that he wasn't one of Israel's most faithful children. But what we see in this family is that there, it's not just their problem. It's the problem of the entirety of Israel at this point of this famine. Naomi means something like sweet or pleasant, that name. And which is serves in contrast to what she names herself in her grief, which is Mara, which means bitterness. Malan and Hiliyan mean both sickness and destruction respectively. And so we, we think that, that these weren't their true names. Their true names are probably just abandoned because it was a literary kind of foreshadowing to name them these things in the story and because they weren't really major characters in, in what happens ultimately is a story about Ruth and Boans, right? So it's kind of a way to foreshadow their fate dramatically in telling of the story. We do that too. We, we, we leave out names, we change names, things like that. And just, just as kind of a, an aside, do note that, you know, the fact that they take Ruth and Orpah for wives is a very scandalous thing, right? So we talked about a lot of the stereotypes for the Moabites with that they were a scandalous, promiscuous, seductive kind of people, like kind of drawing people into all kinds of immorality, right? So for these two Israelite young men to take Moabite wives, you know, is, and at the suggestion of Naomi is a very scandalous thing, like for them to, you know, eventually if they were to ever migrate back to Israel, they were bringing Moabite wives home, there would be major, major issues with that in society. Any, any thoughts or questions on any of that stuff? And Paul's right there for you, before you jump on.
Well, do you, yeah, do you think Imelik felt he had a choice with crossing the border? I mean, I wondered if his trust in God, sometimes we feel we have trust in God and he can push us beyond our comforts. So do you think that's what he was doing? Exhibiting some trust?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. As, you know, for him to basically just walk with open hands into the land of the enemy is a, is a risky thing to do. You know, and I don't know if he was, I don't know if he was driven more by just, I'm trusting you guys to just kind of supply this for me, or it's like, I'm desperate, I have no other choice. It's the only thing I can do for a family, you know? And it may be some odd mix of, you know, if it ain't one, I hope it's the other, you know? Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. And, you know, his, his early death may signal that it wasn't really like a, you know, I don't know. It's a good question, though. Yeah, the, the reasons behind why some people do things like that, you know? You don't know, especially when, because, because the Bible, while it speaks of so many things, is often silent about a lot of things. And you wonder if it's just left for us to just wonder about that.
Well, right, and his choice obviously cost him their lives. So, right, that's, I just wondered. If you had read it, okay?
Yeah, I love stuff like that, though, just wondering, just, you know, wonder why people do things, yeah, in this story.
But if they had stayed in, in Israel, they would have died because of the famine, probably. So they were looking for food, you know? And when you're hungry, you look for food.
Yeah.
When we talk about the, the tapestry and how we look at the, the back and we don't, or we look at the little snippets, you know, if this had not happened, we wouldn't have had Jesus. I mean, so was this in the plan all along? I mean, you know, did they have to, that red thread you talked about? I mean, did that have to happen?
Yeah, I mean, who knows? Or it's, it's just, you know, it's, it's God working in spite of the things.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, and here we see, like, I think it's important to hold those things together, that there is a spiritual dimension to their lives, but also there's just real basic human need that's driving some of the stuff that's happening. And then we see that today too with people that are in, are in crisis situations, you know? It's a, there's, there's a crisis and I hope that there's somebody out there looking out for you, you know, whether or not you believe in God. But also, you know, a lot of those things are just driven by just basic human needs too. It's, it's a both and.
Well, and Patrick, I love what you said about crisis, make people cross borders. It's not always physical borders that they cross, you know?
Sure.
I think that's important for us to remember.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, when Ruth crosses back with Naomi, there's a lot of borders she's crossing in the same way that.
Right, and I know that the point of this, I think it's wonderful, but you know, there are a lot of borders that people cross that aren't boundaries like, you know?
Right, and to that point, you know, in a way, like, that's what I mean when I say Ruth and Orpah in this opening act of, are, are standing in for us in a way, Gentiles, like non-Jews, is to say, like, you know, we are those, we, we encounter the people of Israel through particular families and people that we meet in the stories of the Bible, just as, you know, Ruth and Orpah meet this Naomi and Elemalach and their sons. And we find in them, even in the people of God, the chosen people of God, that their families, their, their lives are like ours. They're weak, they are vulnerable, they're subject to things like famines. They live within a history of, that includes things like hatred and violence and prejudice. And there is no difference between Israel and the nations, the Goyim, the Gentiles, that can, that can really be discerned in that way of just looking at them. Because what we find out is that even these, these chosen people of God, they face death. They face the realities of famine and suffering. They all mourn, we all die. And this is a realization that the powers of death, the powers of evil that exist in the world, seen and unseen, they transgress boundaries too. Just because you live in covenant with God, just because, you know, we are saved by grace through the faithfulness of Jesus Christ does not mean we are immune and impervious to suffering and the things that befall, you know, just what it means to be a human being in this world. Here we go. Somebody want to read this? This is from Deuteronomy 23.
I'm going to, you're going to, I can't see that, so you're, oh wait, yes, maybe, okay, I can't, I think. No Ammonite or Mobite shall be admitted to the assembly of the Lord, even to the tenth generation. None of their descendants shall be admitted to the assembly of the Lord because they did not meet you with food and water on your journey out of Egypt and because they hired against you Balaam, the son of, is that Beor?
Yeah.
Beor, yeah. From Beor, from the four of Mesopotamia. I can't read it.
To curse you. No, you're good, that's, that's, that's fine. Yeah, that's, that's all there is. Yeah, there's an episode of Numbers.
So little.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so there's, this episode of Numbers 22, where, and 23, where the Israelites are in this particular place in the wilderness where like, we're, we're dying for some like water and things like that, and food, like, we're really struggling. And they go to the king of Moab, and he's like, nah, there's too many of you. We don't have provision for that, and I ain't sharing. And you know what? You guys, because you're so many, you're a threat to my kingdom. And so therefore, I'm going to hire this guy named Balam to, to invite a curse upon you from, from the deities that we worship, whatever. And, and there's, there's a lot of crazy things that happen in that story, talking donkey and all that. But, but, yeah, this, so this is the reason why, like, this is one of the reasons in scripture why the Moabites are the enemies of Israel, is because it didn't get along, it didn't get off to a good start. And it's, it's very peculiar because even everything that happened to them in Egypt, even Egyptians at this point are considered, okay, they can become the people of God too. Like, you know, you can intermarry with Egyptians, that's okay, Egyptians are fine, but not Moabites. And so very interesting, you know, I don't, I don't understand all those dynamics, but it's just very interesting to note that the Egyptians, after all they went through with the Exodus, at this point are considered, Egyptians are okay, but Moabites, not Moabites or Ammonites.
Isn't it interesting that the, they wouldn't give food and water to the Israelites? But yet the Israelites, as in Naomi, had to go there to get food and water.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, great connections. Yeah, that's exactly, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and to, to, an Israelite, to a Jew reading this, all those things, yeah, exactly right, are going to be in the back of their head. Like, this is going to be like, wow, this is like, this is going to be like a supreme challenge to your presumptions about the way the world is. This is verses seven through 14. Somebody want to press on and help us get through this?
I'll read it. Naomi left the place where she had been, and her two daughters-in-law went with her. They went along the road to return to the land of Judah. Naomi said to her daughters-in-law, go turn back, each of you, to the household of your mother. May the Lord deal faithfully with you, just as you have done. May the Lord deal faithfully with you, just as you have done with the dead and with me. May the Lord provide for you, so that you may find security, each woman in the household of her husband. Then she kissed them, and they lifted up their voices and wept. But they replied to her, no, instead we will return with you to your people. Naomi replied, turn back, my daughters, why would you go with me? Will there again be sons in my womb that they would be husbands for you? Turn back, my daughters, go, I am too old for a husband. If I were to say that I have hope, even if I had a husband tonight, and even more, if I were to bear sons, would you wait until they grew up? Would you refrain from having a husband? No, my daughters, this is more better for me than for you, since the Lord's will has come out against me.
Observations, thoughts, things that stand out to you in this? It's heavy.
Naomi sounds kind of angry and bitter.
Yeah, it's not just, it's not just like a, a feeling, it's like, it's coming out and, yeah. Another things do you wonder about or see here?
Isn't there something in the um, Jewish religion or faith where the daughters are like supposed to marry the brothers? If there's any, like when their husband dies and they're supposed to marry any available brothers, and isn't that what she's talking about, about getting married and having more children?
That's it, yeah, it's called uh, levirate marriage, yeah, so it's like the um, there's this like cultural, ethnic, religious kind of practice of since, you know, like, property wealth and all things were, you know, held by, you know, the men in those relationships. Uh, if a, if a, say Ruth's husband dies like he does, right, there, there would be an obligation of a, one of the unmarried brothers, younger brothers or older brothers, whatever, uh, to marry her, so that uh, the brother's inheritance, like Malon's inheritance would be secured uh, in future, and also would, he, he would kind of step in as a proxy uh, and become that. So it was almost like, it's kind of like, it would be kind of like, almost like an arranged marriage situation, but you would see that as an obligation to your family to do that. That was very common among the Hebrews. And so that's, that's kind of what she's getting at when she says, you know, can, is, is my womb still open such that I could provide more sons who could marry you and take care of you? Like, you have, you literally have like, nothing that binds you to me anymore. Like legally, religiously, there's nothing there, you know, you have no obligation to do anything with or for me. Um, so she's, yeah.
Who did Naomi think would take care of them, when she said, go back each of you to your mother's home?
Isn't that interesting? Yeah.
In their culture, who, who did Naomi think was gonna take care of her two daughters-in-laws?
Yeah, um, that's very peculiar, isn't it? Like, go back to the household of your mother, you would think it would be good, back to the household of your father, right?
Right.
But um, you know, like I said, the, those, those mixed marriages and stuff make every, like, eth- ethnically mixed marriages at this time would have made things very difficult, but you know, it's not that um, she sends them back uh, that way, not to um, not to say that, it's basically like, in the, in the care of their mothers, that would be the safest place for them in their own culture and society.
Okay.
That is the place where, for women at this time in ancient Near East, life could be recalibrated, so to speak. And, and a future could be made for them, like, it's just like, it's not saying that to say like um, that the, the relationship with the father was unimportant, but that under the care of their mothers, again, there was this hope that they could be given again, or, you know, find purpose in place again. Any other wonders about this section? I think that's, I think, I think Lynn nailed it, I mean, the bitterness is just, it's palpable, you can hear it, you can, I mean, it's just this sense that, like, is she like, it's like, is she trying to get rid of them? You know, I, like, you, it, like, is it that you're a reminder of my sons, you know, or, you know, I don't know. Um, and that, that's, I just put those questions at the beginning, because I, when I was reading that this week, that was some of my questions, what, did Naomi want to withdraw from them? Did she not want to keep them around? Did she? Or did she care so much for them, she just feared for what their future might be in Israel as Moabites living in, you know, in a place that did not, would not welcome them?
What was her relationship with her daughter-in-laws before? Was it favorable? Do we know that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't, I don't think the text says, but it, I think what it does say, um, let me go back. I mean, it seems that she, she consented for them to have, to take Moabite wives, I mean, you know, when Imalek dies, it just says, you know, uh, Imalek, Naomi's husband died, and she, together with her two sons, was left, and they took for themselves Moabite wives, and, and that's like, so there's just kind of this, there's a silence there, but you, you, you would probably assume that, that, you know, she had, she was, I guess, okay with it, and she may have assumed that they were just gonna be stuck there for a while, because they didn't know how long that famine was gonna last.
It, it sounds like Mo Naomi was caring, but for their welfare, but if we don't really know their, her relationship with them, maybe she thought they would become a burden, also, and then there are three women and not one, I mean, even though the time says that a woman, you know, a widow is not, you know, is in kind of danger by herself, but what's two little women gonna help her with?
Right, well, sure, yeah, and I, and it, it makes you wonder that, did she do that just because she knew it would, it would help secure something for her sons, but when they died, it was like, well, you know, like, I agreed for this to happen, but I didn't really like it, and.
Makes you look at a, what was in it for her, not that she was being so, I like to think the other way. I like to think that she really cared about Ruth, and she probably did, but I'm just trying to, you know, look at the other side.
No, I, I think that's, I think that's great to wonder about things like that, I think, and, and I don't know, like, it seems that in some ways, there was some kind of love there, but it may have not been in the sense of, yeah, I mean, you, you would think, I mean, the way things turn out, you think there had to be something there, it may have been something that needed other things to happen or afford to blossom, but you know, but, and that's what's surprising is, is both Orpah and Naomi, they exhibit this kind of willingness to go with her, like, you know, and, and, and like I said, legally, religiously, there was like, nothing that really bound them to her anymore, they didn't have any sense of, of, you know, needing to cling to her. And, and you know, she sends them away, so they look, you guys just gotta go back, that's where your future is, that's where your best hope of anything is, is going back to mom. But again, like, in, in this ancient world, you know, tenth century BCE, in a world that is a dangerous place to be, that has very, like, really none of the securities that we enjoy today, uh, for a woman to traverse the planet Moab, as a foreigner back to her home alone, would have been, I mean, could have proved, proven fatal for her, you know, it was, it was one of the riskiest things she could probably do. Traveling together in a group was better, even if it was, you know, even if they were still, you know, three, like, widowed women, it, it was still better than for her to go alone, and so it was almost like she had resigned herself to, you know, I've lost everything, a value to my life, so what, what is, what, what values my life anymore, if I die, die, whatever, you know, I can't lose anything else, you know, but my life. But, but Ruth kind of proves to be a match for her, um, as we'll find out, I mean, Ruth, Ruth is just like, she's, you could, I don't know, like, I, I imagine Naomi probably in some ways rolled her eyes, you know, just like, oh, whatever, come on, let's just go, you know, because you ain't gonna go away any other way, so let's do that, let's go, but.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, did Ruth see something in Naomi that was vulnerable? So, you know, you've taught us this, and Duke has taught us to look at the verbs, so when it reads on in verse fourteen, that she clung to her, I mean, that gives you, talk about images, it's not like, I'm just going with you, I mean, who's desperate here, Naomi or Ruth?
Yeah, they weren't just arguing at each other, there was like actual physical contact there.
Yeah.
I mean, just like, I, I think about like, the, the woman tugging at Jesus's garment or something, there's a sense that she's just like, you don't go, you know? And, and yeah, like I said, it kind of proves to be Naomi's match, I mean, it's, it's like, almost like she's overcome by Ruth's sense, like Ruth as a foreigner chooses, chooses, and has no reason to really choose to go with Naomi, to become a, like, to become an Israelite, you know? To choose her land, her way of life, language, her God, is a choice that Ruth makes. And, and it, and it is, it's just such a precarious situation, like I said, whether or not they remain in Moab or journey back to Israel, at least one of them would be an immigrant, an outsider, an enemy. And if you pay attention again to other things, like, for most of the book, Ruth is Ruth the Moabite. There's a guy, there's one of Boaz's guys that calls her Ruth the Moabite from Moab. Just in case you, you know, you don't get that she's a foreigner and not one of us, yeah.
Don't forget it.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the story will not let us forget that Ruth is a foreigner, and she's not one of us. And which, which kind of emphasizes the surprise of, of who she ends up being.
You know, and that's something we, um, my children especially, who are a lot more progressive maybe than I am, but I'll tell a story and I'll put a description after somebody, and especially Brittany will say, Mom, is that important to the story? And I go, no. So, you know, is, was it important that the guy kept saying she was a Moabite? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's like, the, the story's just kind of pressing into us.
Yeah, it's just labeling.
Yeah, the labels.
Yeah.
And, and one of the things too, is, as we move into this next section, which is kind of like the section, the moment of chapter one, is like, we see, we see Orpah turn away, and Ruth, Ruth's persistence calls her to go, her choice to go with Naomi, and and I think one of the things that can happen is we, we just type them, we typecast Ruth and Orpah, is like, Ruth is the faithful one, she, she is persistent, her love for Naomi overcomes everything, she's the one to model here, in here, uh, and Orpah is not, because she, she lacks devotion and courage, because she just goes back home where everything's safe and comfortable and, and, and common, but it's, it's just really not that simple, right? Orpah, I, I want us to, I want to challenge that assumption to say, Orpah is not, is not unfaithful and devoted, she is normal. She is the common, if you will, the common among us.
She's also practical.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, she, Naomi tells her, Naomi blesses her, and, and the blessing from the Lord, and sends her on her way and says, go, go return. You have most of your life left in front of you to live, go live that, and live it with the blessing of God, uh, of Yahweh, uh, be upon you in that. And like I said, there is absolutely nothing that binds her to Naomi, there's not, there's nothing, there's no connection between Gentile and Israelite, no natural connection that's there. Without that marriage, Ruth and Naomi aren't bound, Orpah and Naomi are not bound. But in a way, there's something that's important to see, that um, that Orpah does in fact exhibit a certain kind of courage, because she intermarries with the enemy, an Israelite, and she's gonna be, and people know that, they're still living in Moab, people know what she did. And she carries that story publicly, uh, as she returns to her people, that, that she obeys Naomi and that blessing. It shows us the way of the world, this is the order of the day, this is how things work. And, you know, by contrast, what we see in Ruth is, is going beyond the normal, uh, the unconventional, the irrational. The choice that she makes is not the, uh, it's not the safe one, it's not the ordinary one, it's not even the recommended one. What she shows us is that um, that what does in fact connect Gentiles and Israelites is this radical, extraordinary love that comes from God. She chooses Naomi over a future and the security of her own people, and over the possibility of, even ever finding another husband, ever having children, she chooses Naomi. She chooses a strange land, a strange God, and, and that shows us what is radical, that sometimes the, the, the best option, the thing that we choose is to, is, is actually what ends up being better for us. Sorry, I gotta tell my son goodnight. Everybody get your little babies. Can you wave, Stanley? Can you wave?
Hello.
Monster. He's a monster, his bedtime, so. But um, yeah, so, so we have these two, they're not just types, there's, there's more to them. They're human like us, there's a lot going on there, but, you know, Orpah gets a bad rap, she's, but she's not, not bad, her choice isn't bad. It's um, it's rational, it's the, it's a reasonable thing for her to do. This is um, and this, this is an aside real quick, we're gonna keep moving, I know we're getting close to eight, but we're gonna get through this chapter, I promise, but there's just so much here. Some, some, some have viewed in, in um, some Ju- Jewish and also Christian commentators have noted that Ruth is kind of, serves here in this story as a kind of second kind of Abraham figure. Um, you know, Abraham, God comes to Abraham, Abram, uh, I'm paraphrasing here, get up, go over yonder, and I'll make a great nation from, great people from your seed, you know, you will be the father of a great nation. Um, Abram has no reason to trust this God who shows up in his life, he's from ancient, what is now Iraq, and, and kind of the Fertile Crescent, he has no reason to trust this God who shows up, name, who's named Yahweh, who says, hey, if you get up and go over here to this other land I'll show you, I'll make a great nation of you. Uh, and he becomes this kind of model of faithfulness, because he, he just doesn't question God, he says, okay, sounds good, you know, this God has chosen to come stand in front of me, so I'll pack up everything that I have and we'll move, and we'll see what this God does. Ruth, like Abram and Sarai, is an immigrant. Um, there's several reasons that, that people think she, she kind of serves as a kind of second kind of Abraham figure is. She's also one who, because of her faith, uh, and in this case, Naomi stands in for Israel and for kind of the representative of a person who, who worships this Yahweh. Because of her, her love and faithfulness to Naomi, and her, her, she develops this devotion, uh, and that devotion, Naomi's devotion to God, becomes the one through whom's God's promises are renewed, right? She becomes the, the great, great grandmother of, of King David, right? God, and, and in another way, she's like him, God renames Abram and Sarai to be Abraham and Sarah. Ruth also, in her moving to be with the people of Israel, to be uh, where God in effect was, was calling her to be, whether or not that actually is explicitly said in the text. Ruth receives a new identity that's bound to the people of Israel, that's bound to their God, uh, that's bound to uh, Naomi. And that's a risk, it's a huge risk, the, the identity that she adopts. Also, one last thing is that Ruth embodies a kind of righteousness, this uncommon, like we said, her, this radical love that she exhibits is not common or reasonable. Uh, it kind of supersedes the impressions and the stereotypes that people had about one another. Like I said, Abraham was from the land of Ur, and in him, God found favor among a people that were not in covenant relationship with God. Uh, this challenges our, both of their stories challenge our notions of, you know, what's righteous and unrighteous, was who's good and who's bad, who's worthy and unworthy, who's in and who's out. So these things are always at work uh, in the Bible. Okay, so this is this section here. Yes, so would someone like to read, I think it says uh, fifteen through twenty-two?
Okay, I'll read.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Glenn, go ahead.
I want to make sure there's no hard words. Then they lifted up their voices and wept again. Orpah kissed her mother-in-law, but Ruth stayed with her. Naomi said, look, your sister-in-law is returning to her people and to her gods, turn back after your sister-in-law. But Ruth replied, don't urge me to abandon you, to turn back from following after you. Wherever you go, I will go, and wherever you stay, I will stay. Your people will be my people, and your God will be my God. Wherever you die, I will die, and there I will be buried. May the Lord do this to me, and more so if even death separates me from you. When Naomi saw that Ruth was determined to go with her, she stopped speaking to her about it. So both of them went along until they arrived at Bethlehem. When they arrived at Bethlehem, the whole town was excited on account of them, and the women of the town asked, can this be Naomi? She replied to them, don't call me Naomi, but call me Mara, for the Almighty has made me very bitter. I went away full, but the Lord has returned me empty. Why would you call me Naomi when the Lord has testified? Why would you call me Naomi when the Lord has testified against me and the Almighty has deemed to me guilty? Thus Naomi returned and Ruth the Moabite, her daughter-in-law, returned with her from the territory of Moab. They arrived in Bethlehem at the beginning of the barley harvest.
What's standing out to you? What's causing you to wonder here?
I have always wondered why Naomi, the Israelite, who loved God, told them to go back to their gods.
Sometimes it almost seems like Ruth and Orpah had greater faith than Naomi did. Like Naomi didn't seem to have a lot of faith in this part of the story.
I think Naomi's lost faith.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's very, it's very clear. I mean, she she even like puts it back on God, like she's like.
Exactly.
God, I've done something and God is just has it out for me. I I went away full, but I'm coming back empty. I am no longer pleasant. I am bitter. I am that, yeah. Yeah, it seems that Orpah and Naomi that, or Orpah and Ruth, like in spite of where Naomi is. They still sense something within her worth clinging to. Something that perhaps Naomi doesn't and can't see in herself. Oftentimes, that's what happens in grief.
Right.
I I think that what attests to that is that she says to call her Mara, but her name never actually changes to Mara throughout the story. After this, it stays as Naomi versus like, you know, other cases in the Bible, people's names do change and. Happen here, and I think it's because that like she feels empty and bitter. There is still something there that's worth like being around and being there for.
That's a great observation. Yeah, I, yeah, she she has not ever called Mara. She names herself that, but nobody ever calls her that. Yeah, I mean, yeah, often, often in the Bible, if you're renamed. And it's by God, it sticks, but yeah, otherwise, no, it's it's, yeah, that's not what happens here. She kind of is, she's wallowing in the mire, as it were. And that's a great observation. I love that.
And I've always heard and been told that God can hangar, God can handle your anger.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's okay to be angry with God, that that he wants that relationship with you, and if that's how you feel, then that's how you feel.
That's right, yeah, I mean, go read the Psalms, right? That's like the full spectrum of human emotion, like, God, I wish you'd just, I wish you would just destroy these people who are causing me pain, right? I mean, like, God can handle that. I had a member of my first church, he said his most poignant like God moment was when he was. In the shower one day and he was just so, he was just so like, just at a bottom place, he just started just cursing like out loud, like, you know. What the heck do you want from me, God? Like, kind of stuff like that, but with profanities and stuff. And it's just like, he said, that was like the most like. Present I ever felt to God. I mean, I'm not like recommending that if that's not true to who you are, but for him, he was like a biker, a rough around the edges dude, that was true to who he was. But in that moment, like, it's like, he decided, yeah, if this God is who this God says he is, surely he can handle where I am right now. I I think that's it. That's a hundred percent it. Sometimes we don't, we're not able to, we feel that somehow our guilt, our shame, our grief, whatever we're carrying somehow disqualifies us. Or that, you know, because it is a point of shame for us that somehow that, like, God's not, God's not for that kind of thing. My God, I don't want to hear all that, uh when that's just not true at all. I I would say that, Glenn, you're right in saying that God, actually, I would think invites all of that. Yeah, real quick here, um we're we're looking here finally at the return. Uh they return to town and it says, everybody was excited. Everybody was excited that that, oh, this is Naomi. We've, we we nearly forgot about her. Like, we knew, we knew she was still maybe alive, but we just hadn't heard any news for such a long time. Didn't they go off into Moab and the famine came? It's so good to see that she's still alive, right? Uh but who is this is with her? It's Ruth the Moabite from Moab. You know, again, see here that Ruth is us, you know, this is the people of Israel receiving one of their own and then wondering, well, who is this that's come along for the journey as well? How does, how would Ruth have been perceived based on what we know about uh Hebrew culture, Israelite culture at this time? Well, one, Ruth is Moabite. She's daughter of Israel's enemies. She's a woman, she's an immigrant, uh and she would be stereotyped as a vile seductress. And always for words like that, I always imagine in one of those like Gone with the Wind accents, a vile seductress, right? Ancient stereotype uh for Moabite women was was that. It was just common, just like we have stereotypes for, you know, different kinds of people that are. Equally as invalid and ridiculous, but this is, this is how she would have been perceived. Clearly, perhaps, and and even maybe, I'm just speculating, I'm just wondering out loud. Maybe they thought that, why is all this bitterness come upon you, Ruth? Well, your son's married Moabite woman, what did you expect? And so the question is, in this return, with all of Naomi being centered in this, is there's Ruth on the outskirts of it? Where where what place is there for her? What place could there be for a Gentile, a Goyim, in this covenant people? What place is there uh for those who choose this people, this God? Because this is what she's done. She's expressed her willingness to go where Naomi goes, even to die where she dies. This is a commitment that goes. Until she goes no more. It's profound. I just can't get over just how how deep that kind of commitment is that she makes. It's not just to Naomi, it's to her culture, to her people, to her God. And what is going to be expected of Ruth? Entering into a strange land and a strange people. What are people going to expect of this foreigner? Is she going to have to prove herself in some way? So, in this instance, if Ruth stands in for us, then Naomi is standing in and being Israel. And then what's happening in this moment is Ruth is overhearing in this return, this this re-welcoming back into the word of God in Israel. She's hearing uh what life is like for this people who follow this God, Yahweh. You know, she she talks about, um she narrates her life, uh how God's hand is moved in her life, even in negative ways, right? And this is what we see happening in places like the Psalms, where it's like, even if the the Psalmist's life is just on the brink and everything is just. You know, hellfire, brimstone, everything's falling apart. Uh you have to stop and say, but this person's still praying to God. So there is still a sense that God is real, this God desires a relationship with me. And we may be at odds right now, or I may, I may feel perceived that God is punishing me for something I don't know that I did. Yet this is still my God and I am still this child, this God's child. And like we said earlier, I'm not gonna go into it again, Ruth is rarely mentioned in the whole book, but especially in these first two chapters without people saying Ruth the Moabite. The Moabite Ruth, Ruth the Moabite from Moab. And so uh the naming helps us to begin to notice how the people of Bethlehem are having to to redraw, re- relearn. What a Moabite is. You know, who is this Ruth? Is she just going to be, is she going to confirm everything we think we know about Moabites or is she something else? And so it's important to note, this Ruth who's on the outskirts of this return, and we'll find out when we pick up next week in chapter two. She is there as a migrant farm worker. She is an unprotected Moabite immigrant looking for work, gleaning fields. As the source, to be the source of income for her and Naomi. And we gotta, we gotta figure, we gotta do something with that, you know, we gotta do with that what we have to do with, right? Where is God in the midst of that? Because, I believe I put it here, yeah, so this is, this is kind of the the scripture that's operating in the background when we get into chapter two. Uh in Leviticus nineteen, when you reap the harvest of your land, this is the barley harvest that they're talking about in Ruth. You shall not reap the very edges of your field or gather the gleanings of your harvest. You shall not strip. Your vineyard bare or gather the fallen grapes in your vineyard. You shall leave them for the poor and the alien, stranger, the immigrant. I am the Lord your God. This is what's in the background of what happens in chapter two, when Ruth goes to glean the fields. So this is just something that, just to note that in the life of Israel. This was something that was not just um uh, you know, put into law, but it was expected of you. Like, if you owned land, you set that aside for the poor and the immigrant to come and to glean whatever is left over. You know, you're not to hoard and to and to be selfish with that thing. And so in the.
What a lesson that is for us today, though, Patrick, also.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, like I said, in in the law and the Torah and then especially in the prophets too, you hear this refrain of God's particular care for the orphan, the widow, the immigrant. They're always put together in that triad, uh and there's there are specific allowances and expectations in the law. Uh for the particular care of those people groups that are particularly vulnerable. You shall treat the stranger living in your land as if they were a citizen. You know, it's over and over again in the Torah that's there. And so in in a sense, Ruth, the book of Ruth is asking readers to abandon stereotypes about foreigners. Like, again, like they're the Israelites who receive Ruth, they're having to redraw what they understand about Moabites. And it's not necessarily changing their thoughts. I mean, it's not asking like some like one eighty thing needs to be made. But um, you know, like, you don't have to change your thoughts about every Moabite that's ever existed ever, but. We're asking the bare minimum here. Consider the possibility that there's just maybe one. Good and faithful and trustworthy Moabite that exists and God and whom God loves. And through the lens of that one story, begin to conceive that she isn't the only one. Begin to understand that uh this people, there's another way that we might view them. And it may be a way of viewing them that is more akin to the way that God views them and not just the things that we have inherited from those who came before us. And 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 the whole kind of irony underlying this whole story is at the very end, we learned that uh that King David. Arguably the greatest king in the history of Israel, one of the most prominent figures in the Old Testament, has Moabite blood. He's of mixed heritage. He's not even a pure Israelite. And so there's that sense in the background that there's these, all these things that are kind of challenging. Uh stereotypes and things here. And and there are things that we can glean from that too, and so. Yeah, so I I just want to, um before I do that, um I wanted to just hear, what are y'all's takeaways uh from tonight? What is, what is, like, maybe just one thing that you're taking away and you're gonna think about in the next week? From chapter one.
Patrick, we can't just take one thing away from what you said. I mean, really, I've written all over my Bible here tonight, so I can't narrow it down to one thing.
If you had to try.
I was just gonna say, I guess mine would be crisis, make people cross borders. Never thought about it that way.
Yeah, what's the Lord, yeah, what's the Lord speaking to you? What's the takeaway from that?
I would say faith within despair.
Yeah, it's so huge. Oh, that just runs front, cover to cover in the story.
I think for me, it's that um Orpah's reaction was the normal one and that Ruth's was the radical one based like. Like this unconditional love.
And neither one is, neither one is, they're they're both neutral, right? But perhaps we see in one uh reflected that this love of God, there's something changing, yeah.
I would take that it's okay to be angry. At God, that he's big enough to handle it and he wants that relationship with you.
Yeah, so much, so much of what Naomi goes through that we can, absolutely.
And just how important relationships are with each other and obviously like Lynn said, with God. But that God's concerned for all people, like you said, it's it's. He's just concerned for everyone.
That's right, yeah, and and, well, we all need somebody. And it's often surprising who God ends up putting in our lives that we need. Anyone else? You're invited, but not required, but I'm just gonna leave that out there if you if you do, anybody else has anything. Some of the big things that I'm hoping for is just uh realization that grief and grief and loss find everyone. It's a common human experience that crosses borders. We all are subject to what makes us human together. And uh and we all need God in the midst of that, and we need other people to help us. Sometimes make our decisions and choices for us that lead us into a better place. I think that Ruth offers an alternative to the aggressive aggression and savagery of a time, the time of judges. You know, we're given a story of a foreigner who finds refuge among the people of Israel, and her story is situated in the midst of chaos. And it challenges presumptions that aren't just true of her time, but of our time as well, how we think about others. People that we would call other those people, right? And I think that, like, like many of you have said, God finds us in our need, God finds us in our relationships, in our choices, and also in our prejudices. In unlooked for ways. We are so, we're so fortunate because of that. This is a a um a book that's helping me, um this is this is an Irish guy, Padrego, Tama, I guess is how you say his name, but. He uh is is great line, this is, in a time of judging judges. Someone has chosen to write a story where a woman's courage is the thing that returns a people to themselves, which is to say to God. This is a good summary from kind of thinking about this opening, this opening. I'm here. Yeah. Anything as we as we close our time tonight, is uh anything else? Any other final closing thoughts or anything anybody wants to offer? We'll do chapter two next week. And and we're gonna enter uh this guy named Boaz and see what he's all about. Because he's a, he's a pretty upstanding guy. I don't know, like, I don't know if you ever, I don't know. This is just me and I I'm I am weird. If you've ever seen Beauty and the Beast, I kind of imagine Boaz is kind of like a gasolin' kind of guy, you know, just, I don't know. Just he just kind of comes across as that to me a little bit, but, you know. Would anyone like to close? I mean, I'm happy to close this in prayer as always, but would anyone else like the the privilege of praying for all of us tonight? Well, since everyone's looking away. I'll pray for us. Yeah, thank you guys for being here. It's always a blessing. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this space again to allow your word to speak to us. We're so grateful for all the wonderings and offerings that we all bring to the table. Together, we are gifts to one another and and exploring your word. I pray that it would sit with us this week and that we would be mindful when we watch the news, when we interact with others, when we. Talk to our spouses and our loved ones, our families and our friends. We would be aware of the ways in which you are using uh this wonderful, wonderful book. To teach us something about ourselves and about you and about the people that live in this world. We love you, God. We're so grateful. Uh for the ways that you continue to teach us and call us to follow you. Be with us and those we love. Uh and those who are suffering, in Christ's name. Amen.